Good evening and welcome to Southbridge School Committee meeting of Tuesday, February 28th, 2012. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item two, public input. Is there anyone from the audience wishes to address the school committee? Anyone to address the school committee? Seeing none, I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Dean Gloria.
Present.
Dr. D'Amico?
Excused.
Mr. Jovian?
Present.
Mr. Lozal?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Present.
Mrs. Principe?
Present.
Mrs. Woodrow?
Present.
Six present, one excused.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Reports, Representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Helena Benoit. Helena is unable to be with us this evening, so we'll move on.
One minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, minutes. So long the last time, I just wanted to make sure we went quick. Agenda item five, approval of minutes, the regular school committee meeting of February 14th, 2012. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Sashka?
Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? In any of us, all present. Okay. Representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Helena cannot be with us this evening, so she is excused. Presentations, the accelerated improvement plan with Mike Gynan, Mr. Ely.
Yeah, Mike Gynan is here this evening. As you remember, Mike is our plan manager who works with sort of a go-between, between DESC and the school district to manage our, to create and manage our accelerated improvement plan that you heard about last week, and Mike had asked to do an update on where we are in that process. So I think he has a handout for you. So it's a little bit easier to read.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I thank the committee.
I know. I can't hear you.
Switch on? There should be a switch there. A switch over there, okay.
That's the first test.
Let's see a switch.
We'd have these problems if Paul Zolos was here, did we?
Is it on?
Hello?
It's on. That's on now.
Thank you, committee, for the opportunity to address you. I felt that after the last committee meeting two weeks ago, there was still more to be said and definitely some issues to be clarified, so I thank you for the opportunity. First, I'd like to walk you through what the planning process was from its inception last April, when I first spoke with Deputy Commissioner Foizie and Ava Mitchell, who at the time was a Director of Accountability at ESE, about working with Southbridge Schools. We have a PowerPoint and you have the attached document. So the planning process kicked off in May. I first spoke with ESE in April about working with them. I was very pleased that they were seeking to do something innovative insofar as partnering with the district in a way that seemed to be smart to me. One that definitely looked at lessons learned from their past efforts and tried to structure the partnership in such a way so that it would be successful. Part of that was my role, having a third party, someone who wasn't a direct representative of the state, someone who would be embedded in the district, serve at the pleasure of the committee and at the pleasure of the superintendent, and work with staff to do something that is and was designed to be very authentic. We've hit some road bumps along the way, but I still think that the process is worthwhile and will achieve authenticity, which is really one of my main goals. The process started in June. We were delayed unfortunately by the tragic tornado. June 1st was our kickoff date, so it moved back a week. Superintendent Ely invited everybody who was willing to come and participate, open invitation to teachers, administrators, and school committee members. And we got a good crowd, and I was very pleased with the work that happened at those three main planning session meetings. And the fourth one that we did was basically a review of the work we had done to finalize the plan before submission. Superintendent Ely pointed out at the last meeting, typically this sort of planning process that involves this many moving parts would take place over a period of at least six months. So not only was the goal of it to have an accelerated plan, we were working on a tight timeline, an accelerated timeline, as it were, to actually produce the plan. And I think it didn't work, and I think ESE would say the same thing at first, which is why the plans weren't approved and the process got stalled and became less and less accelerated over the summer and into the fall. The idea behind the plan is to increase the impact of programs, to work smarter, to help facilitate the staff in working smarter, incorporating some proven practices and improving achievement for students at Southbridge. The goal is, the old SMART acronym, was to come up with something that was effective as a plan because it would be specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely. I don't know, we haven't hit all of those yet, that's for sure, but we're working toward it. We submitted for approval to ESE on June 30th of 2011, and the project was two-phased. The first phase was to facilitate the planning process, and the second phase was to implement, fastidiously upon approval, as it was understood at the time. So I think this may have been a part of Dr. Mitchell and Dr. Bonda's presentation, but this is basically ESE's fundamental principles behind this project, or initiative, if you will, that students can't wait for incremental improvement, that this somehow has to be an accelerated thing to improve outcomes for underserved students, the students who aren't graduating, the students who aren't achieving at levels that prepare them for college and career. That it would require a laser-like focus and dedicated project support. So the dedicated project support embedded in the district is me. I tried my best to provide a laser-like focus. I think we're getting there as we negotiate with them what that looks like. Monitoring of the progress toward outcomes regularly, so that Dr. Bonda is our monitor. So she's my counterpart within the system. If you guys are familiar with how ESE structures itself, there's an assistance division, which is led by Deputy Commissioner Foizie, and then there's an accountability division, which is led by Assistant Commissioner Mitchell, excuse me, Dr. Ava Mitchell. And so the monitor works sort of under her office, which is the accountability function, to make sure that we're doing what we say we're going to do on the timelines we say we will. I work with the assistance side, so to provide the district with the support they need to achieve or to get to the bar that the accountability office sets. And that, the idea was that collaboration be rich in the district, which was the idea of having somebody who was a third party, who isn't a representative of ESE, such as myself, to work within the district. This is a little bit more about, this slide represents what I told the deputy commissioners at ESE when I first spoke to them about this process. My background in planning and education comes from starting, working with an organization that started 30 schools on a very tight timeline in New York City, and we learned a lot of lessons about what works and what doesn't in planning. And the biggest lesson I learned, which I was very forthright with them about at the time, is it's got to be authentic, right? The plan has to reflect what the actual work is, or else it doesn't really have an impact on the day-to-day working within the district, within each school, and in this case, within a district that governs the five schools. We saw eye to eye on that. We still do at a high level. I think it's the details that we disagree on. So my point about authenticity was that it be something a lot more than compliance-driven, right? That it be something that people aren't doing to satisfy a requirement, they're doing because they see the value in executing toward their larger goals. So it's about the work that they do. It has to be honest and transparent about what has been achieved up to this point and also what still needs to be done. So it kind of needs, implementation of the plan isn't ground zero, it isn't the start. It has to integrate into something that's already ongoing, right? Thus to be authentic. It has to acknowledge the work that's gone on to bring the district to where it is. It needs to be aligned with the needs of the district and realistic to the actual work that's being done. A living document vividly integrated into the work of the district and the schools. So I think I achieved the first two. I still have failed to achieve the third. And that has a lot to do with gaining approval and then integrating into the work of the district in what I feel is a fully endorsed way by the State Education Authority. So the what of the plan, I'll be brief here, but this is the strategy that we took, and this is something I believe firmly in, as far as getting people who are working in all different kinds of ways to collaborate together on something meaningful, doing justice to the work that the teachers and administrators do, or the good work that they do daily in the district. So if you set the vision as kind of, or the mission as the North Star, it's where we want to get to, then the vision is, what does it look like when we get there, okay? And then the theory of action is, okay, so let's make our goals be the levers that enact our vision. So the idea is the structure of the plan becomes some high-level objectives supported by initiatives that then gets down to the very detailed idea of activities and what specifically is going to happen to execute the initiatives and achieve the objectives. So the objectives had to address the core issues within the district. And when we did the planning process, we worked through a couple of exercises and some of the, I know Dr. D'Amico was there and Ms. Principe, right? And saw at least one of our planning sessions. A lot of what came out was very good and constructive, and that there were some very specific issues that were identified that could be easily addressed. One of those was turnover of curriculum, which came up at the meeting the last time, and also turnover of professional development initiatives. So to make this thing authentic, we really had to address the need that the people who were going to execute it would believe very strongly that this wasn't a fly-by-night exercise, right? That this was something that we were committing to achieving and making a part of the work of the district in an ongoing way. So these were practices, the practices we agreed upon striving to implement were things that were going to stick. And so as the process then played out, I, as the plan manager in my role, to guarantee authenticity, have to maintain that trust. And that'll play into the narrative as we go on. So the initiatives are the programs, policies, and structural changes that serve the objectives. And the activities are the day-to-day steps to make those initiatives happen. Here's a slide from ESE, defining the roles in this project. If you see, it starts with my role and then the monitor's role, and moves on to Mr. Ely's role, your role. Southbridge does not have an assistant liaison. That's for larger Level Four districts, so you can disregard that one. And then there's the Office of Accountability. I won't go through all of this, but this is a revision that came out in September. And ESE has been transparent all along that this is something that they're trying to figure out, that it's a new type of design and a way to partner with districts to produce improved outcomes and that they have had to tweak as they go, which is one of the reasons that I asked to address the committee tonight, because I feel as though the presentation last week by the Accountability Department failed to acknowledge that. This is a revised timeline from September 15th. So it moved the plan approval from July to September, acknowledging at that point none of the plans had been approved, the five that are in development and/or approved that are a part of this process. So they revised the timeline then. The most important thing to note is that the highlight meetings on the original were supposed to begin in July, or excuse me, in August. And the first one here is in October. The first one that we had in the district was in December. I think I needed to clarify from the presentation last week, they said that they had been coming monthly. The first official update or highlight meeting, the formal highlight meeting that we had, was just before Christmas. It was on December 21st. This, again, I won't walk you through, but it does sort of lay out what the high-level responsibilities are on a monthly basis for myself, the monitor, and the district, for Superintendent Ely. So we submitted on June 30th, and this is what's happened since, a brief summary of it. On July 21st, we had our first meeting with the district, which was to review the plan. As we were originally told, that would sort of be the well-done, validate the work. If there's a tweak or two that needs to be made, let's do it. The plan was definitely presented to me as something that was going to be highly individualized to districts. And though our common goals outweigh our individual differences for all of the stakeholders here, I still think that that, I'm still striving for that. I think that the Accountability Division has worked to normalize things in a certain way, so maybe a plan that works one place should be the plan in another place. We're still trying to figure it out, but we've made great strides recently since the, even before the report was developed that you received. And the first meeting didn't go well, as far as I was concerned, as far as what was promised. It, I thought that it was going to be the opportunity where the state came in and validated the hard work of the folks that volunteered their time and their efforts to do something. And that's just not kind of how the dynamic played out. But Dr. Wood was new to the process, so was I. I think they had a little less training up until that point, and maybe he didn't have as clear a set of expectations. I was upset. I feel like these things kickoff, kickoff is critical to their success. So I let my dissatisfaction be known very clearly, and they were very receptive to that, specifically the Assistance Office and Dr. Foizie, or Linda Foizie, excuse me. And we worked a lot through August on how things were going to play moving forward, calibrating expectations, and despite our best efforts, I don't think things got clearer. What, we were asking for very specific feedback on the plan, and the document that you got last, or two weeks ago, was the first very specific feedback we got. So there were intimations made. I felt like I was interpreting a lot. I think they hadn't found one voice, and maybe they still struggle to do that. But I'm working with them for the benefit of this process to make sure it goes well. September 12th, we had to resubmit. I did so. We kept the three objectives that we started with there. There were some significant changes, but no structural changes, all right? September 23rd, I had a conference call with Dr. Mitchell and a few other senior people in their office, and we walked through it, and that conversation didn't go well. I obviously, my ideas about what make a plan authentic in theirs weren't meshing. I really felt that one of the necessary things that needed to be done was, if we were going to develop the capacity to plan at the level that they envisioned for the people here in this district that you govern, that they had to use the monitoring process to develop that capacity. Did they expect people who were trained instructors and things like this, who hadn't been engaged in a process like this, to come up with something perfect right away? Or did they expect me, in a very inauthentic way, to just write it? Irrelevant of what was going on in the district and the people who would, whose work it was a reflection of and who would be charged with executing it. So we were banging heads at that point. We agreed to have another month to work through these things and resubmit, which we did on Halloween, October 31st. And at that point, one of the objectives changed. One of the objectives was community engagement, one of the larger objectives, which I think was very relevant to this district, right? It had a bunch of initiatives that worked at engaging the community to come and be a participant and an asset in the work of the schools, in ways, in very creative ways that the teachers and administrators came up with. We decided that that wasn't with, that stood outside their understanding of what the plan should look like, that because it was accelerated improvement plan and should directly affect what happens in the classroom right away, that those sort of long-term objectives didn't suit those ends, right? So fair enough. We scuttled it and we reworked the structure. We submitted on October 31st. November 17th, we had a meeting in Mr. Ely's office with Dr. Mitchell and senior staff, four other senior staff members from ESE, to review the plan, and they were very positive about it at that point. They offered to approve the objectives and initiatives and to give conditional approval for some minor tweaking on the activities and benchmarks. Mr. Ely chose, and I agree with him and still do, that no, we weren't accepting that. We were going for the full approval, and we would make whatever necessary tweaks should be made, but that this conditional thing was something new, that wasn't a part of the process all along. And how do you go out to people who worked really hard on something and say, "All right, now I want to launch and execute, but we only have conditional approval"? I don't think it served the project's ends either. I think that it was unfair. So then we get a D, but we still pass? That's not, so then is it worthwhile executing and implementing if it's a D then? It didn't mesh with my good sense. So we agreed to resubmit. They asked for a very tight turnaround. Despite having vacation plans over Thanksgiving, we were able to do it. We resubmitted the plan on November 29th. We were told at that meeting on the 17th, we would have feedback on Pearl Harbor Day, December 7th. We did not receive that feedback until January 25th. And I think the letters dated the 25th. We received it, and Eric had a call from Deputy Commissioner Foizie on the 25th, which is the report that you received, which is the first highlight meeting from December. In addition to, they then made that the quarterly progress review, so, which is what you got. So the fact that evidence wasn't submitted isn't evidence that nothing was going on. It wasn't communicated. There was much confusion. We didn't realize that that was the quarterly progress review. Everything else had been put off. Not put off, but had been pushed down on the timeline because the beginning of the project hadn't gone as we had planned, and this, other districts experience this too. I don't think as severe as we have. New Bedford and Southbridge seem to have suffered the most delay in the acceleration, if you will, and the most confusion around these things. So I received a phone call on New Year's Eve asking for evidence when the monitor's report was due. And I was confused because I thought we just had our first highlight meeting. And I thought it went very well. It was the first opportunity that we really had to sit around the table with the plan and discuss in a very constructive and specific way what was going on with the person who would be monitoring it. Dr. Wood has since left. I think maybe, I know it didn't work with his schedule to continue on as the monitor. I think maybe his expectations for what this process were didn't work out with his schedule, which I can understand. It's been a burden on mine. So we got that feedback, and then the next day, we had our second highlight meeting. So again, I want to make sure I clarify that when ESE presented two weeks ago, I know they said they'd been coming here for these meetings monthly. So the second one was the day after we received that. And it was tense. It was definitely tense. Since then, we had a meeting last Friday, which was our third official highlight meeting. Dr. Nadine Bonda, who presented to you, is now our official monitor. It worked well that at the beginning of the meeting, we were able to go over what the expectations for the working relationship are, how she would like evidence presented, in what manner and format, and what would suffice. And she didn't want a truckload of it. She wanted very specific samplings, things that made good sense, things that we can definitely work with. The meeting went very well. We got pats on the back, I think it's safe to say, definitely, variable pats on the back. So moving forward, we're doing a hell of a lot better than the documentation and the presentation you received two weeks ago would have folks believe. So I definitely wanted to clarify that. We're still in a position where we're being charged with executing an unapproved plan. From my professional opinion, that presents very severe risks, right? A lot of work is accomplished with groups of professionals by developing their trust, and a key ingredient there is having credibility with them. So you can't come at them and say, "Hey, this is what we're going to put all of our effort into", and then turn around a couple of weeks later and come back and say, "Hey, I was told that I have to change this, so now we're doing this." It doesn't work well for credibility, so it, we're in an interesting spot, but I'm still very confident we're going to work out of it and that this will all be, again, in service of our larger shared goals, which are to make this a worthwhile process that actually implements some best practices into the district that stick and things that the teachers and the people I work with here in the district, I'm very pleased to and honored to, really value and see as beneficial. But let me not go on. This is the structure of the current unapproved plan. So the top three, forgive me, my PowerPoint changed the color, new additions. They would be a different color. The first row are the high-level objectives. So they are to develop a high-quality curriculum instruction program, and then to support that through team building, through shared responsibility, and then through mutual accountability. And that this will serve the end of increasing achievement and outcomes for kids within the district. So the initiatives supporting high-quality curriculum instruction are curriculum alignment and development. So that would be objective one, initiative one. I just want to take a minute to discuss that very briefly, because I think that curriculum development came up at the meeting two weeks ago, and I think that, for whatever reason, it was never really clarified exactly what had, what hadn't been achieved. It became a conversation about a larger curriculum development efforts in the district over a much broader scope of time. The curriculum alignment and development initiative is specifically, Massachusetts put out frameworks aligned to the new Common Core curriculum in August, aligned to mathematics and English language arts. Now, every district in the state has to do what this initiative is, which is to review their curriculum. is, which is to review their curriculum and align it to these new frameworks. From a very high level, the Common Core, in my professional opinion, is a major step forward, not just that many states will use it, so the data that's generated will be a lot better. It kind of goes back to the, we've learned a lot of lessons and gone back to an older way of doing something, where the structure of the curriculum is to build brick-on-brick students' understanding of content, right? So there have been a lot of different changes about how students should learn, and it strikes me as that we're kind of all agreeing that the old-fashioned way might actually be the best. And, you know, please forgive me, this is a glossover summary of it, but the student demonstrates that they've mastered this skill or understanding, and then we make sure of that. We have them demonstrate it, and then we build the next one on top of that, right? It's very scaled down, the standards. It's much simpler and more easily comprehensible to the people who have to enact it and to students who will actually have to absorb it. So the initiative is to work to align the district's curriculum to this new framework, and then to develop resources for that. I think we're way ahead of most districts in Massachusetts at this point. Many of them I know through working through the DSAC, are you familiar with that, the Regional Support and other folks at SE, just in side conversation, and most districts are struggling with how they're going to do this. We've developed a strategy that's in this initiative to use two teams, which we've engaged. We worked with the union to make sure that they would be supportive of this, and provide an opportunity for these two sort of intelligence teams or hedgehog teams to begin the work of doing that alignment. We've partnered with an outside organization too, who's basically given us maps that they spent tremendous amounts of money and resources on aligning, because this is actually not work that could be accomplished. The scope of it is outrageous. I mean, even if teachers were given a year sabbatical to do it, it might not still be attainable within a year. So to expect it is, so basically what the maps present is, we'll work with the teachers to develop their understanding of it, and then we kind of give them the maps, so the alignment's worked out. If you will, it's kind of like when you watch daytime TV and they put all the ingredients together, and then they pull it out of the oven already cooked. That's kind of what we're going to do, so that the teachers understand what goes into it, but then they get to the real work of developing resources that will be in the classroom. This wasn't held up by any fault of anybody's. We needed the resources, which Race to the Top provides, and a lot of other pieces needed to come into place. The other districts in our situation, I have seen no evidence that they're much farther along than we are. I think they're struggling with the same things. I talked to the other plan managers about what we're doing, and they're getting their things going too. So we were able to present evidence of this at the last highlight meeting last Friday, so certainly the next time you receive a report from SE, it will demonstrate that. I just wanted to clarify, that was one thing when I was sitting there last week, I was thinking, it didn't seem fair. It didn't seem that everybody would understand what actually the initiative was that hadn't been achieved. I think that it was framed as something much larger. The second initiative is to integrate and differentiate classroom supports. I know that you had presentations from Superintendent Ely and perhaps the Director of Special Education last year, I'm not sure, about the district strategy. This is part of your district's strategic plan. So this is actually taking the work that's going on in the district and integrating it into this. Having tiered and differentiated instruction in the classrooms to meet all the students' needs is something that we obviously want to achieve. Everybody wants to achieve, and we have a plan to do it well. The progress that they had already made when I came on board was laudable and continues to be, and there is evidence of that, and it has been provided to SE. The third initiative is, came out of the core issues when we got the planning team together, which one of them was, there's no consistent sort of definition, a Southbridge definition of what high-quality instruction looks like. And it was one of those lightbulb moments, because it was like, wow, and to be fair, if we're going to implement a plan, we have to make sure that everybody is aware of what exactly it is that everybody agrees on is high-quality instruction. What can we be looking for, so that there's a clear set of expectations for classroom practice? And we've made great strides toward that as well. And very soon, I believe that the union is reviewing it right now, a draft of it. And this plays in with the new teacher evaluation tool that Superintendent Ely's been working with union leadership to agree upon, and the state just released their framework for evaluation about six-
Yeah, you were a tenth.
Okay. Which was much later than we anticipated. I think the original date, when I first was speaking with them in April, was that it was going to be over the summer, so it would be something that we could integrate into this high-quality definition stuff early on, so that it's consistent, so that we're not telling them multiple things that they're hearing one clear, consistent voice as far as expectations for practice are. And now, though it's later than we expected, it's happening. So again, the other initiatives, I don't know if you want me to walk through each one with you. I figured not. So if you have any questions, we'll be able to accommodate those in a sec. So the February 24th meeting went very well. We are implementing the plan actively. I think there was confusion throughout the whole process as to whether we were to be enacting full-on with SE mandate and unapproved plan. So now it's been clarified. I don't think it was earlier. Certain people think it was, certain people think it wasn't. That doesn't really matter, because here we are. We're about to hit March, and we're about to hit full stride, which is what really matters for the students, the teachers, and the other people that work in this district, and the taxpayers as well. The QPR, the next one, will be in April. We know exactly when it is now. If I don't get an evidence request from my monitor, as I did not last time, I will reach out and make sure that happens. But the highlight discussions that are, were to be happening, are now happening, and those make up a good part of the evidence. So our first step toward the next quarterly progress review was a very, very positive one, and a lot of evidence was presented. And the next presentation you get, or any documentation you get moving forward, will reflect that. And as you were told last week, they've provided additional support for the writing of the plan. So I'm working with Ms. Ann Lane, who is esteemed colleague. I have great respect for her. She's the plan manager in Randolph. She works for an organization called Schoolworks. We spent some time working last week, and we will work tomorrow and Thursday as well. We'll be giving Eric and, or Mr. Ely, excuse me, an update on Friday as to the progress. I think the resubmission date is in April. I haven't even paid attention to the date, because we anticipate resubmitting well before then, hopefully in the next two weeks. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions? I know that, again, I just wanted to clarify. I am very grateful for having the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Deguio.
Mike, I have several questions, actually. Several, when the state came in a couple weeks ago, as far as I'm concerned, and I didn't say too much that night, in my opinion, their credibility was shot. We spent 20 minutes battling over the semantics of the term submission, and nobody at that podium would seem to understand exactly what the term submission means. And when we kept stating that if paperwork was not submitted, it does not necessarily mean that that action didn't take place, they never seemed to understand. It was almost like the English language escaped them at that point. We tried, every member of this board tried in simpler and simpler terms to try and get them to understand what submission means, and they refused to the man or to the woman to understand that. Looking over everything that's occurred since June 30th, I just took a couple of quick notes. July 21st, the first meeting was flawed. In August, the dialogue, it was generalization feedback you were looking for, and were promised specific feedback. They told you needed to resubmit some revised plan on community. Then, when you met with them in November, they gave you conditional approval. They didn't give you, you know, everything is wishy-washy with these guys. December 7th feedback is promised. Nothing comes until January 26th, or until at least late December. Monitoring is lacking. Last week, or two weeks ago, they were stating how they weren't on top of things. They weren't even close to being on top of things. This committee that I sit on, and I've sat on for the last 10 years, has taken an awful lot of grief from the state. And I'm not one of the people who sits up here who blasts the state every chance I can get. I really don't. I understand that the town of Southbridge, especially when it comes to our school district, hasn't performed with the Eagles. I understand that. But to expect us, as you say, to not monitor, you know, individuals that are inexperienced in the areas that they were asking for things to be performed in, is really inexcusable. It's like saying to a mason to build a wall and giving them a spoon. You know, if you don't give them the correct tools, they're not going to build a correct structure. And that is what, from what you've just told us, the gist of what you just told us is exactly what's occurred here, yet two weeks ago, they came in and, how, I mean, to put this nicely, they read us the riot act. And there was absolutely no, there was no talking to them, to be honest with you. We would speak, they would nod, they would smile, and they would absolutely not digest one iota of anything that this board had to say. Do I think that I want the state to come and take over? Absolutely not. This is my town, born and raised, just like most people on this board. And quite frankly, if they do a job as poorly as they have overseeing this thing, this school district would be doomed. But I appreciate everything you have done. I appreciate this plan that you've put in place, your fortitude in doing the things you've done. I just don't know how successful we can be if we're not going to be dealing with people that want to at least cooperate with us.
I share some of your frustration. I think I detailed that in the process I've been through. To be fair, I failed on a couple of, I failed to articulate the plan in a way that met the high bar they set. And perhaps the feeling that you have that you're not being heard is because they have such a laser-like focus. I'm trying to get in alignment with that to make this work as best I can. But I do share some of your frustrations. To their credit, though, they put, invested a lot of resources and people and time into doing something that I was frankly attracted to, and honored to be a part of, because it's something none of the other 49 state departments of education would do. So they are experimenting. I think maybe the manner of their presentation didn't reflect that or take ownership that they hadn't mastered this yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Princebeck?
Thank you. And David, I agree with you. And I want to just speak a little to what David was speaking about in the meeting two weeks ago, and it was, you know, no documentation, therefore no evidence. And I think David was very clear two weeks ago, and he specifically asked them over and over about the documentation, and they repeatedly say, "This is not about documentation." And yet, I see in the moving forward, we have implement and document actively. And I'm still confused. What is the evidence we need to provide? What is the documentation? Are there, you know, minutes of meetings that have to be submitted to them? What are they looking for?
They're looking for minutes of meetings.
Documentation.
They're looking for other documentary evidence of these initiatives taking place. That's what they're looking for. If, again, there was some confusion around the meeting in December being, in addition to a highlight meeting, a QPR, our first QPR, and the protocol that they had established wasn't followed, and I think that may have been confusion on a number of people's parts about submitting that documentation. But what that documentation is, is that sort of stuff. So for example, when we go on a learning walk, we provide documentation that shows what we were looking at, what we observed, the findings we came to, and how those were communicated back to the staff, and any action steps that came out of that. And so there is, they're looking for documentation. That includes minutes.
Thank you.
And they were provided with that last Friday.
Mike, I appreciate the update that you've provided, and one of the concerns I think I have, though, is the fact that as a group of stakeholders, and the state's always talking about stakeholders and get our stakeholders involved, and one of the objectives that came out of that was truly community engagement. To take that out of a plan, we hear that over and over again, and truly, if you look at anywhere across the United States, if your community is engaged and your parents are engaged, and a student performance, I believe, is going to increase. Would that not be true?
In my professional opinion, that is definitely a strong factor.
And the state's telling us to develop an accelerated improvement plan, and who better than the stakeholders here that know best about our community? And I appreciate the fact now, we have to put these all into boxes, but I look at team building and mutual accountability as almost one and the same.
If I may, it will become one.
Right, but-
In the new iteration, it already has.
So I don't want us to lose the ball on community engagement and outreach and communications. I mean, that has to be a highlight of our district moving forward, and I'm sure that we will, the school committee, take an active role in that. The other concern that I seem to have is, there seems to be a disconnect, from what I'm hearing, between the assistance part of ESC and accountability. And that's what I'm trying to hear. You work specifically through assistance, and Lynn Defoizzi has been very good in providing assistance to us, and now we have the accountability people, and it just seems that there's no meshing of the working together part. Is that a fair assessment?
Fair in the sense that, to clarify, in my frustrations in communicating and working through this process, I'm not privy to their internal workings, but that's how I've made sense of it. So that's my hypothesis, is that there's that tension between the two that is a creative tension that they're trying to figure out. But that's how I make sense of the different things that frustrate me.
Well, it's frustrating for us, because, I mean, there's nothing worse than a headline in the paper that says, "We don't make the mark," or "DSE comes down to us, a black eye on this community," when it comes down to that every one of our stakeholders, everybody's working hard to achieve a goal that the state won't even put final approval on. But I don't even, I still don't have a clear sense of why they won't put final approval on the objectives. I mean, what specifically in the plan are they looking for that they can't say, "Yes, that's approved, move forward, march on"? I agree with you to the point, I don't think I would want to have undertaken a plan to say, "I'm going to implement this plan," but the state's not going to give me approval for that plan, because we all know in the state, they're going to come back six months from now and say, "No, that's not really what we wanted. We actually were looking for something that..." And then they're going to put a black eye in again, because, "Oh, look, you didn't do what we wanted you to do, but we didn't give you approval." So I have a problem with that. So I agree with your tact that, "Hey, look, you didn't give us approval for this plan. Why would we want to fully implement that plan"? So I have a concern of, what the heck are they looking for to get this plan approved?
I think I have a better bead on it now, and I'm working with Ms. Lane to make sure that we achieve that. I think that it was a moving target, and I think now it's settled, and we have a focus on what it is. It is a tighter- It is a tighter presentation and certainly a more easily comprehensible, so better articulated format for it, so that it's more easily monitored by them. But I, I have seen other plans, so I have struggled through confusion too, as to what exactly is being looked for. But it may, I think we were, myself and, and the, the state organization as a whole, both departments, were struggling through what we believe to be authentic planning. So my vision for it, one that I've hung on to very tightly, is that, as I said before, that it's, it reflects exactly what's happening, so that it's real to the people who do it, or else it, it loses meaning and, and risks becoming a pure compliance-driven exercise that has little meaning and will never stick. So for me, that means capturing. What I did last June was I tried to facilitate a process and capture what came out of that, honestly and authentically. And not guide it very deliberately, to, to sort of allow, allow the people to work through what is a proven process of discovering what their needs are, figuring out what they needed to address them, and then documenting that. I think accountability sometimes, and this is not just at, at the State Department of Ed, this is maybe in, in other realms as well, gets a little too stuck in the theory of planning. So there's, there's, maybe they're, they're stuck on pure thought, because if you look at a plan, you'd say, okay, I'm going to implement it. But that doesn't, that's totally inconsiderate of its context. So especially a context of a, a school district in a town that's governed by a political body, right? That is, the, the production function of which is inside the classroom. And teachers do that, and they're professionals, credentialed professionals, in a union with collective bargaining rights, with a, if they have tenure or property right under the law to their job. So you, it's not a matter of having a plan and saying, do this, and it's done. I don't think any human organization is, but, especially human service organization, but especially an education organization, where the, the charge is to, to work through the, the structure as it is, to implement some sort of impactful change, requires getting outside of the theory of planning and figuring out how it's going to work. So again, and I'll, I'll finish with this, but my, my thought and my intention, and the one I pushed back on, was approve the plan, validate their work, because this captures exactly the hard work that these people did. And then if, if you feel that the bar is higher, we'll continually get there through this monitoring process that you've developed. And that by the time I leave and, and other people leave, that this will become something that the capacity will already be there. When these folks need to turn around and, and put together a plan in the future, they'll have experience doing this. This was their first time. So that, that, that was my understanding of it. And it didn't, it, it resonated with them, I think, but I think specifically the Accountability Division saw things differently.
Mr. Lozlo?
Yeah. Mike, I wish you the best of luck with, with the state. Our experience, or my experience as experienced school committee here, from the beginning of being labeled, when they say, don't label children, don't, they labeled the district. Prior to me getting on for my second tour, I know that one of the former chairman, vice chairman, took a chastising by a, by a fellow from Boston, and we had many sit downs to try and iron out, geez, what would you do differently if you had to go back and redo what the state did? And we said, geez, whatever you do, don't ever label a community, because at that point there creates a mass exodus and all kinds of problems. Today, many years have passed since then, and I think that this school committee, our district administration, teachers in various walks of life in our community, worked diligently to get rid of the bad rap, so to speak. Were there problems? Yes. Are there problems? Yes. Are we willing to work diligently to fix them? Absolutely. We're spending a lot of money, a lot of energy, to try and straighten this out to the state's liking. What I'm finding out is, they're experimenting. As they go through their experiments and they find out how you're supposed to do it, then they'll relay it down to the locals. Until then, they're going to play this chess game, and I feel that you're a very good chess player, and I think you'll do well with them to, what I, how I look at it is to get them in the box, to hold their feet to the fire on what they really want, so we can really do what we're supposed to do and document it, and then ship it to Boston to say, this is what you wanted, this is documented, here are the results. And I, I wish you the best of luck. I know, I can speak for myself, we're willing to do whatever it takes to educate a child in the Southbridge school system despite the federal and state government. I think it's going to get done.
Thank you, Mr. Lozlo. I want to assure all of you that I am very committed. I've come to know the people here in the district very well, come to like the town very well, and I have a singular goal of getting rid of that label.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Degore?
Last, last thing, I promise. Mr. Lozlo is, he's the master of platitudes. And one of the platitudes he uses all the time that I can't stand but fits this perfectly is kneeling jello to a tree. I think that analogy fits the plan perfectly that they've presented to us. It's, we're trying to kneel jello to a tree. They haven't given us anything solid, and if you had seen the ladies two weeks ago tap dance around that podium, it would, you know, it would have made community auditions look fantastic, because they had nothing really to offer except criticisms. You know, that we're standing in the doorway, we haven't quite opened the door, we're, you know, taking one step, but we haven't taken two, you know, and over and over again. I mean, there wasn't one positive thing that came out of that meeting. We didn't leave this hall that night with anything to build on or anything to even kneel to the tree. So, you know, I, I have to echo Mr. Lozlo's hope that you're able to, to pull this together, because to date, you know, we've been chastised, we've been disappointed, and really, we've been not lied to so much as not told exactly what was going to occur and the way it was going to occur. So you have, you have my blessings, believe me.
Thank you. I, I felt after two weeks ago that, that's why I requested, and I'm very grateful that you allowed me to, to address the committee, because I think some things were left out. And I think you guys deserve a clearer picture, and maybe it was time constraints or the nature of the presentation, but you deserved a more accurate picture. Thank you for that opportunity.
Well, I, I thank you for that, Mike, because I think, honestly, we didn't know what the report was going to be, the presentation from the state, what their format was going to be. I think we would be better prepared now in a second go-around of, okay, this is what we're doing, this is the evidence. Look, folks, we all know that we have to do a better job to improve performance of students in this district. That's, that's not a secret. The problem that I have is I believe the state put us, and like Mr. Lozlo stated, labeled us a level four school district, and they have no idea how to change that label of us. Because by Dr. Mitchell's own assessment at the meeting was, your district is labeled at the lowest performing school. We were told at that meeting that our schools are level two, level three schools. So therefore, we shouldn't be a level four district, because none of our schools are at a level four. The state put us at a level four school district because of issues that they found seven years ago, with lack of leadership, lack of financial stability, lack of town support, buildings falling down, lack of technology, no discernible differences between regular classes, honors classes, AP classes. If you took a real hard look at that tier three report, that's what it was called then, the tier three report, this school committee in this community addressed every single one of those concerns. If you look at the NIASK for our probation status at our high school, we, we accomplished every single one of those goals and issues that were put for us for our accreditation, except for building, a new building. That accreditation, even though we have that building, brick and mortar up, won't remove that until we actually get in. So that's the problem that I have, that these, these organizations place you on a label and then don't know how to get you off of that label and keep changing the game along the way. So thank you for all your hard work, and believe me, I, I think I'll speak for all the members on the school committee, we will do anything that we can to support you.
Appreciate it.
For the next meeting, we'd like, maybe perhaps before the next report that we have you come in, to brief the school committee before that meeting as to what evidence you're, you as the plan manager have put in place, what the district has put in place, so that then when they come before us, we can adequately defend the work that's being done by, by the district.
That makes perfect sense, and I will.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, report of the superintendent, Ms. Teal.
Just briefly, there was a tragedy in Chardon, Ohio, over this, earlier in the week, where a number of students were, were killed. And this afternoon, I sent an email to our entire staff just to remind them of the importance of making connections with students. I think sometimes we get so caught up in some of the drama that we're talking about up here today with planning and those kind of things, and curriculum revision, and, and different instructional techniques and learning walks and all those things, and we forget that we have children in front of us that sometimes just need an adult to pay attention to them. And we have a, we have an outstanding staff that cares about kids, but we put so much pressure on our teachers to teach, 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 that I wanted to remind them when I sent this email this afternoon, that, that things that, I, I don't pretend to understand what happened in Chardon, I know the community very well. But I do know that in, in many cases, you can prevent these kind of things, you can prevent student suicides, suicidal attempts, those kind of things, if you just make connections with kids and listen to kids. And I know as a pediatrician, you see the same thing, sometimes kids just need somebody to listen to them. And so what I tried to do with our teachers today, and I, I want to assure the community that our teachers are very aware of, of this incident, and will, will make sure that your kids are taken care of, and that we don't ignore any kind of incidents of bullying, harassment, those kind of things. We're extremely, extremely aware of those things. And, and I just want to commend our staff for the work they've done already, but this, this kind of an incident just gives rise to the fact that we can never let down. We can never forget that as hard as we push our kids academically, we have to push ourselves to make sure we're making that connection one-on-one with kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, report of the business manager, Terry.
Let me begin with the financial report, which was in your packet, and I, I would just make two quick amendments, if you will, to the narrative. First, at the top of my general comments, I noted that the financial projections assume that thirty-seven five hundred, thirty-seven thousand five hundred would be released for some school purchases. We're actually not going to do that right yet. There are some further research that I've done, and I'm going to still hold that money until such time as I'm convinced that, you know, there's some real purchases that need to be taken care of there. The other, which I just noticed under revenue, frankly, and when I reread it myself, is another grant that still has not come in yet, is the ELL grant for this year, the Title Three grant. Most districts have not received that. There were problems with almost every application in the state. The department is working on it, and, and the grant is still, we're entitled to it, we will get it, we just have not received that money yet.
We actually, we actually had two representatives from DESE come down, sit with our ELL director and do that to the specifications that they expected, and they're the people who will take it once it's submitted, it's been submitted now, they'll, they're the ones that will approve it.
I would expect, again, within the next 30 days, we in many districts, frankly, will be seeing that, that money as well. Other than that, the financial position has improved dramatically, the freeze is doing what we hoped. At the end of your report, again, as I've been doing all along, I've identified some, some amounts that we're holding for various soft costs regarding to either the restructuring to the new school, or in fact, you know, in a couple of cases, contingencies for like special ed tuition. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Any questions, comments?
Okay. Okay.
Moving on, very briefly, and again, it's really informational, but we've given you as of, I think as of actually February 23rd, an update on the various grants that we, both state and federal, that we have received and what their status is currently, and also an update on our revolving funds and its status currently. The one note that I would make on the revolving funds is there's a couple of funds, and most notably, the school lunch fund, and I did make a note, that it looks like it's in a horrible position, but in fact, what you see is expenditures are encumbered for the year. But the way revolving funds work, you only declare the revenue when you receive it. And obviously, we get sales every, every day, really. We get revenue on a monthly basis from the state and from the federal government. So at the end of the year, this will all look fine, but at the moment, it doesn't look good.
Terry, can I ask you a question on that school lunch?
Sure.
We had a lot of conversations with your predecessor and the former school food service director relative to this account.
Yeah.
Do you, do you project that there should not be any issues?
As of the end of December, I projected that we would have a slight growth in our fund balance for the end of this year. I think we ended the year with fifteen thousand and change, and I'm looking right now, if everything holds through. And actually, the good winter, winter has been a help to us, because we have had less sicknesses, so that means there's more students participating in the meals, means there's less snow days, and when those snow days are made up the end of the year, typically they don't have the same meals.
Don't curse me like that.
So at any rate, yeah, don't curse it like that, that's true. We're getting snow the other next few days. But, so I think our position will improve, I would say conservatively, to about eighteen thousand. We're still watching it very closely. I would also tell you, in, in a subsequent meeting, we'll propose to you the restructuring for staffing at the new high school and at the elementary schools. We do anticipate some significant savings in staffing, and, and that will, again, not this year, but the following year, obviously have a positive impact on the fund balance. Just to put this in perspective, however, typically speaking, what a food service would have for a fund balance is roughly three months' operating costs. That's about $480,000. We have fifteen. So we have a ways to go to get to the, the point where we're really at that point where if we had a major catastrophe, or if we need to replace a major piece of equipment, we have the fund balance to do it.
Terry, can I ask you one more question going back to food service? Just so that we're on the same page, because we had a lot of conversation about this last year, and I believe the timetable might be coming up now on the participating in the summer feeding program. That was going to be something that the school committee was going to take a look at as to, was it worthwhile financially for us to do it, because we had lost money the previous years? And it was a timetable for the grant, and knowing that we had changes in food service directors, reconfiguration of schools, we may put that in abeyance?
I, I think right now, we're targeting a meeting with the state in late March, early April to talk about that. I will tell you, the state has already granted us the ability to carry over a grant from last year, which was unused. Little grant, but it's a, you know, it's, it's some funds, it's about thirty-eight hundred dollars. So we will have that available to us at a subsequent meeting when we talk about the summer program. If you decide to continue the summer program, there's some old project bread money, again, in some of those legacy revolving accounts. I would ask that we use that to offset some of those costs this summer. And I think the state is very invested in us having a summer program. So I think one of the things we're looking at is, for example, certain sites were good five-day sites, and so we might keep those sites operating on five days a week. Other sites were four-day sites, really, the fifth day Friday was not good for them. So we might, instead of having every site operating five days, we might have certain sites that got a good Monday through Thursday, only operate those four days. Those other sites, like the Y was a good example, I think the library was another one, those sites might be a five-day-a-week site. So those are some things we're looking at to develop a plan for you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Last, and I apologize if I have to more regularly, as I noted in going through the financial report, part of our process of doing the new budget document, it helped us really go through every single staff member. There are a lot of staff members that needed to be realigned.
Um, there are a lot of staff members that needed to be realigned, so there's a lot of those individual budget lines, which I did include in this report, that look either like they're gonna be way over or way under. In some cases, it looks like there's a line that we have there that wouldn't be spent. Um, the bulk of this transfer is to realign the budget, so it matches up with where these people ultimately we're gonna be transferring to and where they're gonna be paid for. It also lines up with how your budget will work moving forward. Um, what I would like to do, uh, certainly, is to have the transfers approved tonight, I would tell you the transfers won't happen immediately, because we have a process, once you approve it, where we're gonna need to unencumber some funds in some of those lines, so that that money can in turn be moved into the appropriate line. But ultimately, the end of the day, this is how this money would be moved around. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I understand this is very long, and it's not my practice to really wanna give you a document this long, which is why I worked very hard to get it to you in advance.
Any questions on that? Okay. Any further questions of the business manager at all? All right. Seeing none? The school actions, uh, can I, uh, have a motion to suspend the rules and add, uh, school actions, and to add a gender item, uh, A, to approve the budget transfers proposed February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven, per the attachment, we'll call one.
So moved.
Okay, so this is the motion to suspend the rules and add, and then gender item, uh, call it, uh, ten A.
Nine A.
Nine A, nine A. Let's add that a gender item. Okay? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. Degogorio?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Six yes.
Now, is there a motion to accept or approve the budget transfers proposed February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Degogorio?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item ten, unfinished business, the concussion, concussion policy, second reading. Uh, Mrs. Woodruff, do you have any comments on that before we?
Just a reminder that, um, our next meeting will be the final, um, reading and acceptance. If anyone, um, has any questions, I have not received any myself, I don't know if the office has, um, to please bring your questions before the final and the acceptance reading at the next meeting. Other than that, I have nothing.
Is there a motion to, uh, waive the second reading of the concussion policy?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. Degogorio?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Any other unfinished business? I just have one item that I just wanna bring to the table, um, it's something that we had talked about in the past, um, and I think as we move forward with the closing of the high school and reconfiguration of the district, that, uh, just to get a sense for presentation to the school committee, um, the reuse of the high school, and we also talked about moving the maintenance department, so, um, I've asked Mr. Lozo to, uh, chair an ad hoc committee consisting of just himself, Mr. Como, and Mr. Wiggins, and I would be an, uh, ex officio member, just to report back to the school committee within forty-five days, any proposed solutions for, uh, reuse of the high school, and possibly, we talked about using the Foster Street building for maintenance department, supply area, um, and we have a lot of items that we're gonna have to take out of the old high school, uh, and middle school, so there's a lot of work that has to be done in that. So, Mr. Lozo's around during the day more than any of us to be able to talk to, um, the maintenance department, Mr. Wiggins, so I'd ask that he just report back to the school committee within forty-five days, um, of what, some solutions for the reuse of the high school and Foster Street building and maintenance department. Okay? All right. Any other unfinished business? Oh, Mr. Degogorio.
I, before I forget, uh, real quickly, this is by way of instruction, uh, if you're going to send a character assassination letter to the school committee, dealing with anyone who is a teacher or, uh, is an employee of the school district, would you do a couple things? The first thing you should do is you should actually sign the letter, so that we know who you are or which group you represent. And secondly, I would personally appreciate if you would spell my name correctly on the envelope. Otherwise, the letter really doesn't mean anything to any of us, and will be tossed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Degogorio. Um, all right, moving on, new business, the next regular school committee meeting will be held on March thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, at Council Chambers. Um, other new business, uh, Thursday night, um, is Representative Durant's District School Roundtable with discussion on Chapter Seventy funding. We have a budget meeting. I know Bay Path School Committee has another meeting, so I, I may try to be there. Um, I have a couple other events as well, so we'll see about getting at least one representative there to be at that meeting. Um, excuse me. And, uh, any other new business for me? Mr. Lozo?
Uh, I'd just like to comment on Southbridge High School's success last night. Uh, I don't remember, Mr. Jovan and I were talking as we announced the game, we don't remember when, there was a double home game in the districts with the boys team and the girls team, uh, and both of them were bon burners of games, they had an excellent, excellent night. Southbridge won both of the games, they're going off to the districts the next round, uh, it was a, a great crowd, a great time, I just have to pay tribute to both of those athletic teams, uh, for a great season.
Thank you.
That's Wednesday night, too.
Yep, just as, so for the public to know that, uh, Wednesday night, the boys will be playing at Worcester Tech at seven PM, pending any weather, um, at seven o'clock, uh, Wednesday evening, and the girls will be paying, playing Thursday night in Worcester, they're playing Maine South, but the location has changed, I think, so just stand by, contact the high school, uh, on those games, they were great games. I just wanna throw a, a real thank you and kudos to Mr. McHugh and the pioneer broadcast news journalism. I got that right this time, Mr. McHugh, I always mess it up, um, for the work that they've done, bringing basketball, uh, not only some of the taped games that we've done, but the two live broadcasts that they were able to do at the school for the community, the, um, last game of the gym, uh, when Southbridge, both boys and girls played David Proudy, which was supposed to be the last game, uh, in the high school. What a great crowd, uh, just like to thank everybody that came out for that game, um, and then following up with district games last night, but, uh, a lot of great work by Mr. McHugh to get that out, and the kids, and, and his volunteers that he has for that, uh, presentation, 'cause it was well-received, I've gotten a lot of great feedback by community members that have been able to watch it on TV. Mr. Lozo?
I'd be remiss if I don't, uh, mention that the cheerleaders also won their tournament, and they're going off to the next level also. Seems to me that, um, there's not only a turnaround educationally, I think there's a turnaround happening in the athletics from fall now into the winter sports, we're just looking forward to the spring. Good luck.
Thank you. Any other new business for me? Seeing none. Uh, school committee reports, curriculum, Mr. Degour.
Uh, nothing to report and nothing scheduled to this point.
Okay. Policy, Mrs. Woodruff?
Um, nothing to report and no scheduled meetings right now.
Budget facilities and transportation subcommittee, uh, Dr. D'Amico is not here this evening, but there are meetings scheduled, again, Thursday, March first, will be a budget transportation subcommittee meeting at six PM. Also on Wednesday, March seventh, will also be a budget meeting, uh, and I believe the last one will be on March fourteenth, so those are those scheduled budget meetings as we formulate, uh, next year's school budget. Anyone that wishes to attend those meetings, um, welcome to, to be here. Collective Bargain and Mr. Lozo?
No report at this time, but, uh, as chairman of the building committee, uh, we have a building committee meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-first, five o'clock in Hyman Room, the next school tour, is gonna be March seventeenth, nine o'clock in the morning, uh, on a Saturday. Um, the project is, again, moving forward, we had the job meeting today, uh, on time, under budget, and, um, as we say, uh, when we're sitting at that table trying to funnel everything into the finish line, it's, uh, getting hectic, but I give our, uh, I give our professionals, administrators, a, a lot of credit, and teachers, they're gonna really, uh, maintenance, the superintendent, Mr. Wiggins, it's an exciting time in that room, uh, to do so many positive things, but, uh, again, it's gonna get really hectic, and, uh, looking forward to working together with everybody, it's, uh, it's a great time.
Thank you, Mr. Lozo. And Ryan, do the tours are the third, uh, Saturday of the month? And I, I spoke to Mr. Lozo about, about this process, about, um, the difficulty of people maybe not getting up to the superintendent's office to sign waivers, so I, further discussion that I may have with Mr. Lozo in the superintendent's office is that I'd be willing to be there for, for those, uh, tours and bring waivers directly to the site, and if people wanna sign off on them at the site, as opposed to having to be here, to do that, to facilitate a little more at ease, I'd be willing to do that, and we'll get more information out to the public, uh, moving forward on that. I know, just again, on the building, uh, Representative Durant, Senator Moore, Mr. Ely, other dignitaries in town, had an opportunity to tour the building last week, and I know, uh, the cable, um, director, uh, filmed that, so hopefully that'll be on cable access pretty soon. It was, it's a small glimpse of, uh, what was going on in the building, 'cause there was just so many workers there, but, uh, it's amazing to see the amount of work that has gone on in such short periods of time.
The, uh, we're looking into the, the idea of, of bringing some of our underclassmen, our, our fifth and sixth graders, up to tour that building, but to be honest with you, currently, it's just not safe to bring kids that age up there. Uh, but what we're planning on doing is, once the weather breaks and they get a little further along with the, uh, the flooring and those kind of things, uh, we will be planning on having some special tours for families, uh, with, with, uh, fifth and sixth graders to tour the building on a limited basis, uh, when it's a little bit safer.
Anything further on the school committee reports? Seeing none. Item thirteen, executive session, vote to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, union and non-union personnel or litigation to extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Part Three. Is there a motion?
Sure.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. Degogorio?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Six yes.
The school committee will reconvene in open session for the purposes of German-only. Thank you, and have a good evening.